Start with the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley, Justin McFetrich.
Here.
Trusty Trombley.
Here.
Trusty Garrick.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Motion to approve the minutes of the village board meeting, January eleventh, two thousand sixteen.
Delude.
And a second?
Second.
Any additions, deletions, discussion?
Nothing from you.
Okay, with me. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval signify the same eyes.
Aye.
Any dissentions? Presentation of petitions, communications notices, general question period for members of the community.
I got nothing.
James, James Trombley.
Did you practice that before you came here?
It was even in unison.
We thought they were going to rage for a while.
Did he finish your sentences for you? Okay. I'll have the report from code enforcement, Mr. Tatro.
Well, you have my report. This is the slow time of year, as you've probably figured out by now, but sent out a few letters dealing with the, well, speaking with the attorney, I think we talked about this last month, too. And we're just waiting till the end of the month, I haven't heard anything from any one of the three, actually, as to if they're going to do anything, so we've got to wait for the time to expire. If they don't do anything, then the village is going to put the fence up around the one property. The other two properties are just waiting to get the, to send them out certified, get the responses back that they've got the letters. One's in New York, the other one's in Ontario, so it takes a while for that to get there. Other than that, that's about it. Had zoning board meeting, worked on some changes and so on, so forth, that I'm sure are part of your packet. Other than that, it's been quiet. Grass isn't growing yet, so.
Any questions for Mike?
Mike, which one is the one-ten Church Street property?
One-ten Church Street.
I just went through that today and saw that. That was the Hyson Hall.
Oh, that's the old village office.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Village office, yeah. Alright, I thought that would occur to me.
Yeah.
We haven't got a card back from the registered. They have the thirty days. Still got another week or so.
Yeah.
We haven't got that letter up from Mr. Murney's office.
I didn't think we'd get a very fast response on any of them, Tatro, I figured it'd, you know... But I am going to start the process of the violations and, you know, give them timeframes to fix what's there, and if not, then we'll use the court systems to, you know, try that route.
It's too bad we have to go that way. But that's the first three, there's probably four or five more that we'll have to address here over the next year or so.
Yeah.
We'll get to it. Anything else, Mike? I'll short this just a minute. I was taking lessons in how to shorten up, say everything in ten words instead of thirty.
Do you hear that?
No comment.
Good evening, welcome to the February village board meeting. Currently, many water wastewater bills are past due. Warning letters will be coming out soon, and shut offs will follow shortly thereafter. This is not the time of year to have your service discontinued, but with the non-payment of this essential service, the village will be around with a wrench to terminate the service. That's my quarterly pitch. Village residents will soon receive a letter from the board detailing the shared water project with the town of Champlain. This informational letter will describe the project thus far, what the new construction season will bring here in the village, and the explanation of why the water rates will be going up as of the April two thousand sixteen billing. As stated in the letter, the rate increase is necessary for the village to meet its debt obligation beginning January of two thousand seventeen. This increase is greatly offset by the reduced need for pressure pumps in some homes, reduced cost for water softening products, a reduction in the wastewater cost, and better overall water quality throughout the village. If you have any questions about the water project, the need for the price increase, the progress of the project, progress of the project when construction begins, please call the village office at two-nine-eight-four-one-five-two. The skating rink is being prepared by the DPW crew. Weather permitting, the surface should be ready for skating soon, again, with the weather permitting. Village elections, eighth or the fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. The village elections on March fifteenth will be here soon. Please exercise your right to vote. The polls are open from noon to nine here in the village office. There are two trustee seats up for election. Trusty Garrick and trustee Thomas Trombley are running for reelection, and we hope to see all registered voters taking the time to vote and express their interest in the well-being of our village. Thank you. Trusty Trombley, surprised you didn't have...
You sure did. You sure didn't start here.
You may have time to draw breath.
I only have a couple of things. I've worked with Mike recently in regards to the water pressures on Prospect Street. I think we're going to be fine, based on his calculations. You know, we have one home at the very beginning that's could be hopefully in the forties.
Uh, yep. I actually got an email back from him today. I wanted to verify on the pressures, and I had figured thirty to thirty-two pounds, and he said with the overflow elevation increase approximately at seventy-five feet, it should be about thirty-two pounds. So it should be in the forty-pound range, low forties, but the first couple.
Yeah, those first two houses are probably a forty-two to a forty-four, so I think that's sufficient.
That's pretty good.
So I'm happy to hear that and satisfied with that, because that was kind of my limit requirement when we started. But with that, I want to thank Mike. He's been like the project manager in this job here. I know you as well, also deserve a big thanks, but this guy puts so many hours in making sure that this project has got the correct components, the adequate pressures throughout the village. You know, right now he's working on the water meters. He needs a big thanks because he's doing us a huge, huge, huge service in regard to the engineering of this. So thank you very much. Yeah, I'd also like to thank Mary Monida for all the work they're doing on the budget, getting it ready for us. We appreciate it.
Mary's got to be very busy here pretty soon.
That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Trusty Garrick.
The library had a board meeting last week or the week before, and they had asked Allison to pull all the information together that we had requested, and they did not get any answer back at this time. But I did speak with Mary again this past weekend, and she said that she would reach back out to her, so I will hopefully have it for you in a couple of weeks and give it to you plenty of time before the meeting, so you have that information to look over beforehand. So I'll follow up with her again at the end of this week, but she said she would get to her and get that back.
See, her substitute librarian got hired here also, so. Mrs. Sullivan? Who was filling in for Allison?
And that's it for me.
Alright, thank you. Trusty McFetrich.
I can add a little bit of information to that library topic. I was in the library on Saturday morning, so I talked to Allison. Well, she brought it up. She's in the middle of writing her reports. And she said those reports include all the information, and she'll have that in a couple of weeks. And then she asked if I could come in during, well, either one of us, but you're at work, during her regular hours, and she could go over some of it with me. So whatever I learn, I'll share with you, or I'll let you know when we're meeting, and maybe you can...
And I can adjust, that's good.
Right, yeah, yeah. So that's the holdup right now, is those reports she's working on. Okay, a little bit of other information. We did have the first meeting with the revitalization waterfront consultants. We took them on a walk around downtown Champlain, and then they also went out and looked at the mouth of the river and drove along the river, right Greg?
Mm-hmm, on the Ridge Road.
On the Ridge, uh, on the Rabbit Road.
Rabbit Road.
Right, yeah.
On the Mar road.
Yep. And so they're working on phase one of the project now. There'll be another meeting, I'd say, within probably a month. We had another successful children's story hour last Friday, so those are on the first Friday of every month at six-thirty at the meeting house. This week, we have two presentations. On Wednesday's, the presentation about Broadway, and on Thursday is a presentation with Michael LaFontaine about ice fishing. And those are both at the meeting house. And that's all I have.
Okay, very good. Trusty Trombley.
I really don't have much, except to echo what Tom said, you know, thanks girls for everything that you do with the budget, but we happened to be at an outing yesterday, and the topic of the village board, and the crew came up, and there was nothing but absolute praise for Mike with his leadership and the crew. So people are talking about the things that are happening in the village and the good work that everyone is doing. So I just wanted to pass that along.
Your team win?
Yes.
Your team won?
Did your team win?
I don't know, I didn't watch it.
This team wasn't in it!
I watched some of the commercials. Okay, very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Anything else you want to bring up? Alright, have the report from the clerk preser, please.
Everyone has expense and revenue reports for January. I think our budget looks very good.
I think for the most part, we're where we need to be at this point in the year.
Yeah, we're ahead of all of us.
We'll bring up the budget again under your business, just a...
Did you want to do those transfers before we do approve the warrant?
Yes.
Of course, we, we, Greg, talked with Darlene and made up some of the building costs, because some of them were not high enough to cover the contents and the buildings.
We've been coasting along here for the last four or five years, and I'll take the responsibility for not bringing this up to snuff. There was a lot of things that were greatly underinsured in our policy. So we brought it up, we brought it up some... In some places, we doubled the insurance that was, we had, in some places, we tripled the insurance that we had to bring it more in line with what it would cost us to replace or to rebuild or whatever. All of those increases that we made in that policy, and there were significant numbers. I mean, you're talking probably five hundred thousand in increases overall. It cost us a total of, I think it was five hundred dollars, something like that.
It wasn't a big increase, no.
So it was, you know, we should have, I should have done this years ago to bring it up to more manageable, I guess, expenses.
We also added the new pickup, and unfortunately, when we got our flood insurance, some of the premiums doubled. That was across-the-board increase. Went from four thousand that we paid last year to like fifty-five hundred this year.
That's just on the wastewater plant?
Yeah.
It's just on the wastewater, fortunately.
Anyway, the transfers are just covered our portion of the insurance that we didn't have in our budget because of the increases. A nineteen-ten point four unallocated insurance, four hundred and fifty dollars to come out of retirement. A nineteen-ten point eight retirement. F nineteen-four, nineteen-ten point four unallocated insurance, a hundred and seventy-five dollars to come out of F ninety-ten point eight retirement. And G nineteen-ten point four unallocated insurance, two thousand dollars to come out of G nineteen-ten point eight retire, or retirement.
Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this transfer? We all know by now, we can't have any counseling negative, so. Just an unanticipated increase.
The needed.
Okay, there's no further discussion, a roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrick.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Presentation of the warrant.
We have additional invoices to add on. The additional invoices are three thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents, and our total warrant is thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-three ninety-six. That's because twenty thousand dollars of this is insurance.
But it's only once a year.
I make a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices for a total of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-six cents.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just had a question, as I'm looking at these additions. What is the one that has attorney in parentheses?
That's the initials.
Okay.
Stafford, Owens.
Oh, never mind. I'm like, I don't think I've seen that before.
Looks like something.
Well, that's why I was curious, that's it.
Thank you.
This must be for his work, quickly, writing the letter, so.
Henderson.
Okay, so I have a question on that. So why does he charge us extra for everything? What is inclusive in the fee that we pay him?
We don't pay him a fee. We don't pay him a flat rate.
Charges us by the hour. By the hour and by the job, or by whatever. I mean, when I call him on the phone, if I listen real close, I can hear the clock ticking in the background.
It's off.
I tell him, don't you cough, don't you sneeze, just keep on talking. No, really, it is. But that's what it is, it's not like we had before.
Right.
Where we got unlimited for indictment.
Right.
Now we got to pay by occurrence. And I think we're still... I think we're still going to come out of it cheaper.
I'm sure it's no different. I'm sure it's no different if you were with a different law firm. I'm sure that, you know, the days of those kinds of things are probably long gone.
Yeah. And I've been, so far, I've been very happy with the timeframe, his responses. Mike's had a good, he's got a pretty good relationship with him. I calls him on things like we're addressing with the buildings and stuff like that, and he will meet with us, sit down and explain everything and go through everything with us, so it's, I...
Well, that's my fault. I thought we were paying that amount we budgeted, and then we keep having these additional charges, and I'm like, well, what is he covering exactly?
We have money in the budget, but it's not a contractual thing.
No, thanks for asking, because I think that it's good for us all to get on board with that, because we're all questioning them, I'm sure.
Yes. Anything else on warrant?
Mike, I'm assuming that was for the list stations at four thousand dollars? On the, on the two-seventy-five?
Is it Pete Motors?
Yeah. Yeah, that was for the pump, about two or three months ago. The, that was for a spare pump for Park Atlas Station, and it was like almost double that price. I found it in a company, local.
I remember that stuff about now.
A lot, like a couple thousand dollars cheaper than what it originally was.
That was a pump and fork, right?
Pump and fork, yeah.
So it was for the Park Atlas Station?
For Park Atlas Station.
Okay.
It was like a couple thousand dollars cheaper than when we bought previously.
Excellent.
Probably all buy them at the same place. Same supplier. Okay, there's no further discussion, a roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrick.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Correspondence? No, let's do Mike's request here first, please. Mike, your turn.
I've got a purchase request for seat covers for the new floor pickup, actually front seat covers. There are a couple, actually, a couple different companies that sell them. This is the cheapest one I found. It's the cordurore covers, just like we're having, the one-ton, which seemed to be holding up. They're the amount of one thirty-nine thirty-one.
The ones in the one-ton are holding up for a little bit.
Yes.
Went through that scene in Hurry.
They're waterproof and their cordura is coming, it's like a canvas, basically. Because, I mean, you can buy ones that are like stockings. You hold them to the light, there's nothing there, they don't seem to roll.
We don't scratch garden or anything else.
No.
Oh, did I need to?
Shouldn't, please.
I make a motion to purchase those corduras at one thirty-nine thirty-one.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
What account will this come out of, one of you?
A fifty-one-ten point two. It's going from A fifty-one-ten point four. Street maintenance.
Any further discussion? A roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrick.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Of course, comments? No, sorry, Mike.
No, Mike?
You're up.
Well, we've been very busy with the water project. I know the, before the, the bids are out. The bid opening is, I think it's February seventeenth. I did get an email tonight, you know, the first agenda went out today. There are a few things they have to change that we, that we caught, and things that have to be changed for it. I know originally, they sent me a digital copy, and I started going through it, and it was seven hundred and three pages. The book is, I believe, we think it's almost impossible to be able to catch everything from up. We're doing what we can to go through it and catch any, anything that we think there's issues with. Right now, I'm in the process of knowing how many water meters. We've got to count how many meters as far as in the village and town we're going to change in the house. But along with that, we're putting check valves in on every home, so there's no backflow from the homes back into the main line, as well as pressure reducers. We're, they're going to, the engineers are going to give me a CAD drawing of where, or elevation, and all those by elevation. So they're supposed to give me a CAD drawing, so I can see exactly who needs and who doesn't. We haven't, we haven't really finalized the final pressures, but we're thinking around sixty-five pounds is going to be the cutoff. Anybody above that is going to need a pressure reducer, because if not, some of these homes are going to be coming at ninety pounds, and that's, that's not, it's way too much. So I'm in the process of, anything with meter pits that I have to put these pressure reducers in, they don't make one. Our pits are fifteen-inch pits, and they don't make one. So I'm in the process of fitting, should be here tomorrow, of designing our own to put in, put into the pit, so. It's been a little challenging, of course, everybody's plumbing's different, you know, different configurations. It'll be, it'll be a little challenging, but we'll, we'll get it done. Also, we're going to look at thermal expansion, people with, you know, hot water tanks, boilers. Once you put a check valve, that water has to have a place to go, so we're going to, we're going to look into that, and as it gets a little closer here, some people may need pop-offs or expansion tanks where some may not, but we'll, we'll hopefully get that straightened out before, before this is all done. I know the meters, the bid for the meters and the other parts for us, I would say in the next, probably in the next week or so, we'll be going out. I don't know how long it's going to be out for, and then they'll award it, and I figure probably, I wouldn't be surprised if in March we start installing, because we've got to have all these meters in, PRVs, before the project's complete. So I'll, I'll know the timeline a little closer as this gets closer. So everybody will be getting contacted from me, either all go house-to-house or phone calls, or I realize some people aren't home, I'm going to have to set up times when we can go in, but every home, we're going to have to go in to change the meters and do a little reconfiguring on the piping, so. I also want to thank Mayor Martin for the time he spent with me, to see my lovely face every day here at lunchtime. We, we work on this project, and I, I don't know, I hope you're not keeping track of your hours, because your hourly rate's not very good for all the time you spend on this project.
It runs from a quarter an hour to fifteen.
We have started on the ice rink. The weather has not really been in our favor. We flooded it today a couple times, but the plastic's still showing, so please don't go on it yet. I'm hoping, I'm hoping by the end of the week, we'll have enough there where they can start using it. Once you see the barrels are taken away, then it's okay to use. If the barrels are up, please don't, please don't go on it. Last week, we had to do a little bit of ditching and some culverts that were froze up because of the melt we had. We had a few issues with plug culverts and water heading to roadways. I know we had dug over on Elm Street, too, and put a pipe in the end of the DI, because every year we have trouble with water running on the, on the road over on the end of Walnut Street, so we tried to take care of that. Almost all the Christmas decorations were taken down. I thought I had them all, and I missed one on Church Street, which I'm waiting, I went to board the bucket truck a couple times, and every time I go, it doesn't seem to want to run. So soon as, soon as we get up and going, he gets up and going, we'll remove the last single snowflake that's on Church Street that's still lit up. We had a water main break over on Fillon Drive. We were able to fix it quickly. We did do a boil water. There was seven residents affected. The boil water's been lifted, and everything is back to normal over there. Last month, I think I told you, we had a fire hydrant that was hit on Parkett Boulevard that got broken off. That should be getting put in tomorrow, so we, once that's back in, it'll be back in operation. The hydrant's here, but tomorrow, that should, that should be going in, it should be done by tomorrow afternoon. We had a few pumps we changed out, Ashline Lift Station, I think it was actually the last board meeting, we were working on that. Both two pumps have been put in. We did a bunch of just oddball repairs in the shop. We did a little pothole patching. Down at the park, we have some, I don't know who's doing it, but we have some issues. We have, right now, the power's been shut off to all the outlets on the pavilion. Somebody went down, and they decided to break all the covers off the waterproof outlets, spray painted up painting tables, and this kind of thing. So if anybody, you know, sees anybody doing this, please let us know. If you want to do it anonymously, however, but please let us know. If they're caught, then, I mean, whatever legal action has to be taken, we're going to have to put a stop to it, so. If you see something, please say something. That's all I have for it.
We have to figure out a way to jumpstart the security system.
Yeah. We're having way too much vandalism.
If we're going to wait until the water project, we're not going to put these cameras in until the water project comes to an end. So we may have to, like, to bull it a little bit and put our own system in and add to it after. We'll look at that and see what we can do.
So pay for the initial hardware installation?
I'd like to have them pay for the, you know, the wireless part of it, you know, the receiver here, and some of the cameras at the water plant, water tanks, stuff like that, but it looks like that might not be done real early.
Can we reverse it?
Yeah, I think we can get reversed to that. Except the wastewater plant is on our dime. Except the wastewater plant is on our dime. The crust from the library is on our dime. Where else? There was another.
Park.
The park was on our dime.
Right, but the initial installation, according to here in the office and the two water tanks, if we could do those
in the water plant.
And get reimbursed, that's fine. Yeah, in the water plant, yeah.
Yeah, for the money that Mike has figured out that we're saving, I think they ought to be able to do a few things for us. I mean, he's figured it out that we're saving this project. A small conservative estimate? Probably a hundred thousand. With the meters and stuff like that? I think that's a conservative estimate, but we'll see how that goes.
Well, I do think we need to revisit the security down at the more we seem to be doing, the more vandalism we seem to be having.
Yeah, the more verification that we do, the more damage we get.
The more, the more set on, on ruining that, so. I'm in favor of, of going forward with something, getting started with something to, to it's, it's gonna do one of the two things. It's either gonna stop it or we're gonna start catching people and start prosecuting.
I think once we have one arrest, I think a lot of it will stop.
We have issues down there too with people dumping garbage. A lot of them from across the border that have pickups or packages like it's Stephanie's. Not her fault, but, you know, she charging two bucks for whatever you were the garbage, instead they go dump it at the park, you know? So that's, that's another, that's another issue we have there.
Well, let's, let's approach the engineers again and see if we can get a timeframe. We'll go back to NCC and see if we can get something set up and get it moving forward. I'll have something for you in lunch.
Okay, good.
See what we can do.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mike?
Yeah, I got one on when you brought the expansion things. Is it because of the check valve that there's gonna be an issue with that?
Possibly, could be. Because right now, there's no check valves in the homes. So if there's any thermal expansion in your hot water tanks, your, if you have, if you have a...
It causes a backflow?
Well, yes, if it's got no place to go, the easiest, the easiest path, so it can flow back to the main line. Anytime we have a water break, say we have, like we did before, we had a water break down here, we had to shut off the whole ridge road, everybody. Well, everybody opens their faucets up. So what happens? The air goes in, all that water's coming back to us. They can open their faucets, it doesn't matter because there's a check valve by the meter. So they're not drawing that air in. It's putting less water down to us and it's not sucking it out of the homes into the main lines because potentially contaminating the main line.
Yep.
The water coming out of the water heaters in your boilers, it's dangerous.
People, especially they have boilers, if they have antifreeze in them, you know, so they won't freeze, there's always a potential for that coming back into the main lines.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought that, I thought if you were to put antifreeze in it, it would be a full system.
Well, there's, the thing is, you've got a water makeup on there. So it can add water. So there's always a possibility that that could actually go back, if something malfunctioned, it could actually go backwards.
Okay.
Hole in the coil, you know, where it mixed, you know, if you have a coil inside your boiler between the jacket and the, there's always a possibility. It's a cross connection, so there's always a chance that it could flow backwards. So most of the time, if, we'll know after if we start having problems because you'll see the hot water tanks, the, the pop off valve will drip. So then, then we know there'll be a problem or a boiler, maybe a, you know, overpressurized, it could drip. I just, some people don't know with their Ford, they see drip, they do, they put a plug in it, which now you're gonna bomb. You know, they don't understand that it's doing its job, so.
How does this relate to us, though, putting these check valves in as well?
Well, if we put a, if we put a, if we put a check valve in by the meter.
Yep.
Whatever, you, you go away, your, your hot water tank's full, you shut your breaker off. So now all that cold water's in there, now you put your, get your home, you put your breaker on. The tank heats up, that's gotta have a place to expand and go. If something happens and that hot water pop off valve doesn't release, if it gets too much pressure and it doesn't release, it's gonna go somewhere, the line's gonna split, something's gonna happen. So sometimes you run into instances where you have to put either expansion tank or a, a pressure relief valve.
Mike, so what are we gonna do? Are you, when you're doing this, this work, you're gonna inspect to see if the homeowner needs to?
Well, I wanna, I wanna do a few inspections. One is to see if they have a boiler. And look at their, look at their pop off valves on their hot water tanks and under, because sometimes they get so corroded, you know, they, they may have to change them, we'll let them know that. There'll be a few inspections when we, when we do this. The other thing is sump pumps. We have an issue with sump pumps in Village Code, they're not supposed to be in the mains.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll be doing sump pump inspections as well to, you know, not say we're gonna find you today, but mark them down, give them a letter, you have to change it, you have to put it into a, into a, into an outside train of some sort. I realize once in a while, you run into a, a bind where they freeze in the winter. You know, get ahold of us, there's always a, there's always a solution. If we have to for a short period or whatever, put it into the sewer. I'd rather see that than somebody's house flood. But they gotta understand it's gotta go back into the, you know, they can't just put it in there as they feel, you know what I mean? We wanna, we wanna cut down on the extra water going to the wastewater plant, so.
Agreed, so, so what you're gonna be doing is inspecting the, the homes when you're putting these check valves in or probably prior?
Because I know...
And if the homeowner needs to replace...
They're gonna have to take care of some plumbing. You know, there's, there's places, I know right now, that the, the lines, they've got fittings that are dripping. So when you raise these up another ten or fifteen pounds, they potentially could have, they could have issues. Now, if I had to only put the, the pressure reducers in, if the homes are in, and if the piping's in that bad a shape, like in Alba, I can always adjust them down, cut their pressure back to fifty pounds.
So you're gonna preset them all at sixty-five?
Well, we'll see, we're gonna see home, what the piping looks like. But I think sixty-five is the cutoff. Anybody above sixty-five coming in, we're gonna put a pressure reducer.
That's right.
So that way we can adjust it. Those are adjustable twenty-five to seventy-five and they usually come preset at fifty, but you can change that. I just don't wanna have any homes where we're coming, the mains like Alfa, so right here, they're gonna have about ninety-six or ninety-seven pounds, the mains. So I can't put that in here and, you know, we'll have lines that are broke. We have to put pressure reducers. So that's where we're at, you know, by beginning, you figure whatever you have right now for pressure, add another thirty or thirty-two pounds to that. That's, you feel like you're getting sandblasted in your shower. It'll be too much.
Pilling sounds.
So.
Exfoliating.
Yeah.
What's your plan for attacking the absentee owners that we're already struggling with in order to remedy and get into their home and deal with these situations as well?
Well, they, if they have, usually, I haven't had any that hasn't let us in. If they do, I think it's written in the code, they, they have to give us access. I think we may have to give them so many days and if they don't, actually, we'll shut their water off.
Right, but the places where we have, they're owned by banks, they're, you know, these continual...
They're either shut off at the road with no water going in.
Issues.
And when somebody buys it or when they need water, they're gonna have to put it in at that time. Yeah, most of those are shut off already at the street.
Okay.
So at that time, we'll have to, you know, if it gets sold or we'll have to put them in at a later date. And it's really all we can do.
And will, will that cost, be covered under a project?
Well, we'll buy them. We know how many we need, so we'll buy them.
We'll have them stocked, right?
Correct. I, I don't see that many where, I mean, right now, I don't know how many's owned by the paint, what, half a dozen? Probably ten.
Ten maybe.
So.
But they'd have to come to us anyway to turn the water on.
Okay.
Yeah.
If it's turned off, which most of them are.
Yeah.
They would have to come to us to turn it on, so we could make the changes then.
I wasn't sure if they were all off or not.
No, there's a few that aren't, like, well, for instance, Lovell's up here just got sold on Main Street and that one, the water's off. Because we need the home inspectors, I actually got a call about that tonight. But I mean, but, but there are a few that are closed up, you know, we've got some in Prospect and Church Street that the water is off, that I know is off. That if they, you know, if it does get sold or at that time, we'll, we'll change the meter over, put a new meter then, put the pressure reducer into check valve.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we won't have too much, too much, you know, problem with thermal expansion. It's, it's kind of a, you know, time the engineers, they said they did projects, there were only a few places had it, but you don't wanna find out the wrong way. I'd like to let everybody know when we do it, keep an eye on their, you know, at least for a little while, on their, on their hot water tank relief valve and if they have a boiler, their boiler relief valve, so if they can see it's wet, call me. And we can see, you know, if it is, if that's the case, then we can put a, you know, or they can put a, an inter, inline pop off, which those are preset at seventy-five pounds. If they hit seventy-five, it'll go off. Like, if we have a, if you had an expansion tank with a well at home, same kind of, same kind of a relief valve.
Understand.
Okay, any other discussion with Mike? Correspondents, please.
Letter to high son Ho regarding property of one ten Church Street. Letter to Luciana Wyler regarding property of eleven sixty-nine Route nine. Correspondence from Attorney Thomas Lomane to Donald Patterson. Correspondence from Cheltenham County Treasurer's Office and Fourth Quarter Sales Tax Revenue. JCO Monthly Report, oil water order for Fillon Lane and Fillon Drive.
The sales tax check was lower than last year, last thing, or was it?
No, I don't believe so.
No?
I think they're running pretty close.
Surprising because everything's down. Sales tax report.
We saw the value of the Canadian dollar. This is the holiday sales tax, so.
Yes.
Do you want to say it in Spanish? Proshila.
Okay, if there's no questions on correspondence, we move to old business. We've covered, covered the Champlain Memorial Library. Under new business, we have an endorsement. The zoning board is asking for the village board's endorsement of the new forms that they will be using dealing with use variance, use variance application, area variances, area variance application and special use permit application. They have requested that we endorse the use of these forms, make their jobs a little easier, so we're clear. Mike, you okay with these forms?
Yes.
Okay. I, I don't know that we need to do this by motion, but we can if you so like.
Make a motion to approve the new variance applications for each category.
Okay, and second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I like it.
Yeah, it is.
Consistency, consistency, consistency.
All in paper, sign and five to sign, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Review of amended village code regarding junk and yard sales. Mike, you wanna see any changes here?
Basically, there's some different changes that's gonna take place of junk. When, when they, when they goes to the attorney, he's gonna decide under which category they're gonna go into, whether it'll be zoning, whether it'll be the village code. Yard sales, there's really nothing in any one of the codes that we have that address it, so that may end up in the village code. It may be part of the zoning code. And he'll, you know, he'll write the, the legal wording for it, I guess. But it's gonna be a lot clearer, it describes junk, which is a, you know, it itemizes certain things, which is really nice.
All right, were there a couple things here that, that you wanted to see move to responsibility of owners and occupants? Or was it, there was one here about temporary yard sales, porch sales, garage sales?
Well, temporary yard sales, we, the zoning board, I'd recommended that no more than three a year. And one of them being in conjunction with the, the village fests. So you, you'd have one then, then two others at your discretion. We didn't really come up with any kind of, do you permit these things or is it just, you know, I know they're there type thing? I mean, if somebody has four yard sales a year, I, I don't think it's gonna be a catastrophe. But if you have four yard sales a month, you're gonna draw some attention.
Well, that, I think, I think...
I mean, we have to have some sort of law somewhere as, as a guideline.
Well, especially the non-exceed three consecutive days, I think.
Yeah.
Because that could go on forever.
Exactly, well, that was the other thing.
A month-long one, right?
Yeah.
Maybe this could have.
Yeah. So I, I think that was gonna work out pretty good.
So the lawyer will determine where it comes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any more questions for Mike? You've all been copied with the, with the latest revised edition, I believe, of Dear Village Resident. Could we all get that?
Yeah.
Okay. Have to thank Janet and Mary for...
You changed it today.
Yeah, Janet and Mary for putting up with my long-windedness. It's gone down from a page and a third to, I started, it was two and a third pages, so they cut it down for me. It's okay.
You also had a large font.
I know, I, yeah, so I can read it. That's why it was so long, I had to get big print. Go ahead, make fun of me. All right. Anything else come before the board? Am I missing anything, ladies?
Did you want to set budget?
Yeah, I have budget penciled in here, let's, we probably should set a budget workshop. Today's the eighth, fourteen twenty-second? Is that the third Monday?
Yes, I'm still...
No, fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday? That's right, it's short month. Okay. What's next Monday? Next Monday is the fifteenth. That's the week vacation. Fifteenth and seventh's the twenty-second. Let's...
Are you closed for...
No.
No.
You're not.
There is a fourth Monday.
I'm off that day.
Could that leave you? Yeah. Twenty-nine.
Yeah. So can we have a quick budget workshop on the twenty-second?
I won't, I won't be back.
You'll be here?
I come back on the twenty-third.
When's the next board meeting? March?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, let's do it on the twenty-ninth then. We do it on the twenty-ninth?
Yeah, that's good, good for me.
Twenty-ninth? Maybe?
What, what time?
Anytime appropriate, five-thirty. Is that right? Any, can you make that?
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
If I come straight from work, I can be here at five thirty.
AM.
We'll be meeting alone then. Even if you bring the coffee down, it's gonna be alone. So January or February. February twenty-ninth at five-thirty.
Mayor's gonna get up at five.
PM, budget workshop. Don't confuse me here.
Only once a year he does that.
Has to go to Potstown to feed you guys.
That's right.
Okay, and if you got a minute, can I, I need to talk to you about some negotiations stuff.
I see that.
All right. So we'll have a budget workshop, February twenty-ninth, five-thirty. Public is invited.
Done by then.
We should have it mostly, yes. I'm gonna have one need to figure the budget two ways. To see how it affects the tax rate. One with an added employee and one without. I mean, I think we all recognize the workload that we're going to have over the next year or so is going to be huge. And that's a full-time person and we probably will still have to hire a summer person.
Well, and I think as we go forward in this process, we have to keep in mind that we cannot burn out people that we have.
Yeah, that's, you know, yeah.
Maybe double our size.
Yeah, well, that's it, and we just simply cannot burn out the personnel that we have right now.
Bitten off a lot here, I hope we can chew it.
We can chew it, we just need more deep.
Can we do three options? Can we do an option of full-time permanent employee, working through a temp agency and without, please?
Yeah, we have an idea.
I'd like to see the options.
Yeah, I have an idea of how much they charge us, yeah.
Okay.
Want to do this, huh? Doable?
Yeah, I marked it down.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Go for the business board, your motion?
Motion.
Have a second? All in paper.
Aye.